I call the regular meeting of the Cedar Springs City Council. Order will be all please rise, recite the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Those persons with cell phones, if you would kindly put them on off or turn the volume on. Thank you. This time I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Clark, here. Mr. Hopkins.
Are you here?
Roll call. He's a roll call vote.
We're here.
Roll call.
Yeah, I'm here.
Mrs. Nixon.
Yeah.
Patty. Mrs. Powell.
Here.
Mr. Truesdale, I'm here. Mrs. Conley.
Here.
Oh, here.
It's my captain, turn it away.
Yes. Public forum. The council often encourage the public to speak during the public comment and public comments and public hearing portion of the agenda. However, council's policy is to hear the public comment, not to act on the public comment at this time. Concerns brought before the council during the public comment portion of the agenda will be referred to the city manager for action. If after communication with the city manager, no resolution is reached, the concern will be elevated to the mayor and then elevated to the council for action. Those citizens wishing to speak on agenda or non-agenda items will be allowed a maximum of four minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during the council meeting that citizens are allowed to address the council. Please state your name and address for the record. Public comments this time, anybody wishing to speak.
Could I speak as Alton Lee?
Yes, ma'am.
Or Donna's can speak.
Mrs. Clark. No. One at a time, Mrs. Clark will start.
She just said Donna's gonna have her words.
Well, then, Mrs. Clark speaking, I'm gonna let Mrs. Powell in, there's no confusion.
I'm sorry, you're already on the way up. You're so nice.
Yeah, all right.
You're just gonna be there for me, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Clark.
And I had one point, I was thinking, seven council, but I know you've seen this before. But I'll give it to you when I'm done. Okay, first of all, I just wanna say, I'm grateful for so many things tonight, for being a part of a great community of givers, of supporters, people of talent. What a benefit all of you are to the library and to me, and that includes everyone in this room. Talent, while Al and I used our collective talents to try and find out why the bathroom at the library had a periodic flood, just a random puddle, after a week of tracking it, one day flood, one day no flood, it was decided by our DPW friends that they would just go ahead and bite the bullet, just change the seal and dig outside and see what was going on. Whatever it was, the mysterious thing, it's working. And I wanted to thank them for that, because that was really strange. I even met Al on the street, and sometime I said, "Al is puddling again, I don't know what it is." And it wasn't, well, never mind. While outside, we noticed that the tree was dead by the library, at least half of it. And I mentioned the hedges would look nice with a good haircut. And we used to have some mulch a few years ago, and the grass is so sketchy, and wouldn't a park bench be practical for the neighbors? And that just hit me while I was standing, that was an inspiration, to sit up against the front door at night and use our Wi-Fi. Hey, that orange can use a good painting, it's been about 12 years, wonder if Bassett's would redo it again. I cleared everything with Tom, and voila, on Wednesday morning, just two days later, the tree was gone, the yard was deepened, and mulch cut down, the bench magically appeared, all in the same day. I called Bassett's, and Jason and Jerry said that they would be happy to help the library out, with a sitting mind taking it down. And I said, "I bet they would even deliver it." I talked with Tom, and you know what? They did. And it's over at Bassett's right now, it's coming back soon, it'll be shining as in the day it was born. Success, well, it all started with the libraries register now for the Cedar Springs Public Library Summer Reading Program on the crosswalk. People would be driving down the street, all of a sudden, irresistible urge to turn around and come back to the library and register. Usually, we have 700 people sign up by the time it's done, we're already almost to 600. On opening day, we had, Monday, over 800 people in the library. It's a part, we're doing it together, it's a part of the city, helping us and putting up our stuff, it's amazing. We have 16 businesses on here, you'll see on the back, 16 businesses gave over $3,000. We have 20-plus organizations, there are other prizes still coming in, who have given prizes, and six food establishments are donating ice cream and pizza, because they will come with you all for pizza. We're having that for the teenagers. We have 25 programs in just a few weeks. Every night is taken by something else. We gave out 3,000 booklets to prepay the six flyers, then to the high school highlighting our team programs with information about our new library project on the back of the flyer, so why waste the backside of a flyer, right? And so, opening day, we had the fire truck with the rescue squad and the truck, and Marty was there with his team, and according to Stacy Dalton, almost every child, and that 802 people climbed through the truck. Oh, and we gave out 431 cups, we gave out 490 of 500, three thin book bags, and we made $294 for the new library. You wonder will they come, and they do, and it's a miracle. Thank you. Thank you, my city friends who draw our books and take our calls and do all that stuff. We love you, Donna.
Donna, there were 190 kids on the TV talk.
Did you really? Did you get cracked? I didn't, but our people counter said 802 people came to the front door. There were people who never came on the front door, I don't know. But I don't, you don't even say that more people came, because we've only ever had 650. It was 900!
Your time's up, thank you.
An eight-year-old who's very excited to come sign up tomorrow.
Anyone else wishing to address, Mrs. Powell?
I'm gonna do this as a citizen, because this is what happens a lot as a citizen. This was a gift to us, the people of Cedar Springs, from a local artist, Doris Benton. And it got damaged and put in the bathroom, apparently, and it got dirty and moldy and pretty beat up. So, I told Doris about it, and she said she would prefer that it not be displayed again in this condition. So, if it's okay with the council, if I return it to her, and she has offered us a new one for future display, so I'd like to give it back, prefer to do what she wants to do with it, and I, maybe someday we get the other one out and frame her up again.
Thank you, Mrs. Powell. Anyone else wishing to address the council at this time?
Sally Holland, in Cedar Springs, on Main 3, 176227, Cedar Springs, Michigan. I've been had business here for 13 years, trying to do my best to do, run a decent business. Through the last few years, I've really been saddened by all the red flannel things that have happened, because again, I sell red flannels. And all of the things that have happened has hurt that business, that portion of the business immensely. And I'm a reaffirmably that red flannel, this should always be Red Flannel Town, but I think you set precedents. If you post another business assembly, you will basically be saying, you post all of ours, you'll post my business emblem, you'll post every nonprofit emblem, and that is not your position. If the citizens of Cedar Springs, they should all vote if they want it to say Red Flannel Town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Holland. Any other person wishing to address the council at this time? Hearing none. We'll be moving on to approval of the agenda, since we have no other hearing, correct? Approval of the agenda, with an item J to be added, with the option of policy number 12, for the Chamber of Sidewalk Days.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented with the amendment of item J under new business. To have a special event. Are you being asked to be a community event?
Yes.
Okay, so for the designation of a community event for the sidewalk day, is that what it's called?
Summer celebration.
Summer celebration, as being presented by the CSA COL.
CLC.
I'm just trying to read handwriting.
With policy number 12.
With waiving policy number 12.
Okay. First, the motion is with support. Then moved in seconds to accept the agenda, any discussion? Hearing none.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, can we get to that point? I'd like to ask for exemption or not be voting on that, especially after that last training session.
At that time, we'll discuss it. Yes. Thank you. All those in favor approving the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those disdain, by the same sign, no. Hearing none, the motion carries. Okay, the consent agenda. We have A, B, C, D, and E. Me as a council, number, request, add, subtract, or remove.
Is this the point, or we go through the financials again, or the questions?
Yes.
Just one question, I'm just, I was wondering, how many safety vests do you get for 900 bucks? The whole credit card bill was 900 dollars, the safety vest was part of it. So, there are other things on that? Do we know, do you have a support on my rose order? I can go pull the bill. There'll be office supplies on there that we ordered from Sam's phone. Could be another thing. It just seemed like that was a lot. It's not all safe. Okay, good. And this, that was the only question I had of that, anything else makes sense to me.
Okay, hearing none, this will be a name of approval, a provenance of a regular meeting of May 14, 15, and special meeting of May 28, 2015, and May 29. Approval of checks paid 3777 will to 3787, totaling 122,596 dollars and 07 cents. The due accounts payable, check numbers 37809 to 37829, totaling 23,098 dollars and 26 cents, and electronic transfers totaling 995 dollars and 27 cents. The total of all checks and transfers is 146,690 dollars and 50 cents. Resolution number 2015-19, resolution to adopt unpaid delinquents, summer taxes to tax rule. Resolution 2015-20, to add delinquent water and sewer to the tax rule. Approval of addition of $10 permit fee for outdoor seating permits of the 2015 schedule. A motion to approve, Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda. No second to that. They're moved in seconds, or any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Clark, yes. Mr. Hopkins? Yes. Mrs. Nixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Truesdale?
Yes.
Mrs. Conley?
Yes.
Misses Powell votes yes. Moving on, information, Right Place Month of Newsletter, anyone have questions on that? Target Communication, April 21, 2015, Community Building Development Team Minutes. And item number D, was that also, Mrs. Madam Court, requested to be then allowed?
There was an addition to be then allowed. Don't we do that now?
Let's do those now.
This is addressed to the council, it's an email from Patty Bremer. The close message was sent to Mayor Hall in June 4th, and to those members whose email addresses I found in their profiles. I ask to share computer, but as in the past, have received no comments from any council member. As the transparency and communication you all promised, reserve going for those who agree with your personal opinions. Jerry, the special meeting in June was for a presentation only of a medallion that features the band Red Flannels and the trademark logo of the Red Flannel Festival. There was nothing on the agenda about a discussion of the topic, but Pat announced that the decision on whether or not to hang the logo medallion would be made at June's meeting. I believe the policy that was developed was to ensure that the public would be aware of what was happening before making a decision on a particular topic. Holding a special meeting on a Friday night at 7:00 would certainly not a convenient time for the public to hear what was being considered. The council should not pick and choose when they want to waive the policy, and in this case, there's a lot at stake. The June meeting should be used to discuss the issue of the vote taking place in July. I believe, Mark Tainco, who may be pointing sadly, that the festival and city should be kept as separate entities. The festival should be self-sustaining, and the city should not expose taxpayers and the community to another public embarrassment, should the festival board decide to take the law and go hang him. There was also the sticky little problem of a cease and desist that still looms over the city. Why should the festival yet dictate when and where their logos are used within any public buildings? The threat has not been withdrawn, and in fact, when that very subject was brought up at the special meeting, the president of the festival board shook her head vehemently to the contrary, indicating it would not be withdrawn. I understand that most of the council favors the festival and red flannels, that their job is to represent the entire community and not one special interest, as they are inclined to do, yea giveaway. Over 1,000 taxpayer dollars that the festival should have paid for police service at the last festival. Please share my comments with the entire council, since Mr. Hopkins, Mrs. Nixon, Mrs. Conley, and Mrs. Powell have no contact information on the city's website. There's enough addition to it, addition and add the following comments to the council. It was clear, according to the post provided by Batshe, that the special meeting, the medallion was presented to Mrs. Murleton. If you decide to accept a citizen's personal declaration to be hung on the walls of our city hall, then you are opening the door for any business or person to request their business logo or memorial be hung there as well, not to mention the legalities of it. The festival is a business looking for advertising, and in a seemingly chosen, flawed, and shamed void of doing it. Mrs. Murleton's comments belie her full knowledge of how the last medallion ended up in the trash. Had she been fully informed of the festival's actions, she may have had a much different opinion of the whole ordeal. It's glaringly obvious by your actions in the last eight or more months, that several of you have a personal agenda to promote anything red flannel, which is a breach of duty. It is time for you to take responsibility to work on issues important to taxpayers. The warning the festival should be very long at this. This council has repeatedly ignored the manager's recommendations, questioning things that he is in charge of, like workers and air pest service, to the point of embarrassing themselves and the community when you had to bring in a technician to explain how things were. Those kinds of things are not your job. You also ignored this recommendation of the Red Flannel Festival paid what they owed for police coverage, because of your prejudice to the festival, and spent taxpayer dollars that we didn't owe. Your reckless disregard for your position with taxpayers has caused the city far more than people realize, and it needs to stop. Consequence always follow action sooner or later.
Does that conclude her report?
Yes.
Thank you. Any comments or concern on information items? Moving on to unfinished business. Item A, motion to approve a letter agreement between the city of Cedar Springs and the Cedar Springs Museum and Historical Society regarding a financial commitment, second consideration, they came earlier.
Yes, pursuant to the council's direction at the last meeting, I did have the city create draft agreement between the city and the City of Cedar Springs Historical Society Museum. And as proposed, the city would contribute $4,000 annually to that organization. And the agreement lays out what each organization's responsibilities are. I hit a couple of them, in terms of the Museum and Historical Society, they have to fundraise, organize, coordinate, advertise, administer, administer, historical activities and projects focusing on the city of Cedar Springs to the extent of possible. That would provide financial disclosure to the city, as is reasonably necessary for legitimate governmental purposes. And not less than annually, they would provide a report to the city, a report that is satisfactory to us and the forum. In turn, that the city would then contribute $4,000 on an annual basis, and we'd have a city liaison to coordinate with that organization. It would automatically renew on the 1st of each year, August 1st of each year, unless either party gives 60 days written notice of what they wish to terminate the agreement. I did have a representative of the board of directors review this, and they approved it as written. So, I would recommend the city council approve the letter of agreement as presented. If approved by the council, then staff will provide council at a future meeting, a budget amendment will offer as a fellowship.
We started to interrupt, I just, I lost the whole, like, I lost the whole thing. I don't, what did you do to get your stack mine? I had to restart from here. Okay. Or you can do it right from the start, from here? Yes. Okay.
Okay. Motion, what is the will of the council?
Can we vote on the second consideration? That is what I policy, sorry.
But to discuss it, we need a motion.
I would make one, I don't have anything in front of me.
Mr. Mayor, I like the motion to approve the letter of agreement between the City of Cedar Springs and the Cedar Springs Museum and Historical Society regarding financial contribution.
Supported.
Support. Discussion. Would this 4,000 be made in a lump sum here in July?
No, it would be on all of its orders. You build that timeline, isn't that our budget cycle?
Mr. Mayor? Go ahead, ma'am. It's my understanding that the city did contribute in past years.
Yes.
And with the financial downturn, it was taken away, and I'm in favor of the museum. I think they're doing a good job down there, it's really an asset to the city, and I think that's what we would bet we could do.
Thank you. Mr. Clark?
I was curious about the level of contribution that we have made in the past, does anybody have an idea of that history?
I was curious. Right around $300 a month? Okay.
That in, yes.
Currently, Soul and Township contributes 4,000 annually, and Nelson Township, I believe, is 15,000.
Very good. Very good. Any other comments? This contains money, so I'll call for a roll call vote. Mrs. Conley?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Mr. Clark? Yes. Mrs. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Truesdale?
Yes.
Mr. Hall votes yes, motion carries. Item B, motion to consider a proposal from the Cedar Springs Community Building Development Team to trade property at 158 Pine Street for city-owned properties located at 116 Fifth Street.
I move to consider proposal from the Cedar Springs Community Building Development Team to trade property at 158 Pine Street for city-owned property located at 116 North Fifth Street.
That has been moved in second, a discussion. Mr. Manager, would you speak to this?
Sure. The Community Building Development Team owns property on Pine Street that they would like to trade to the city in return for the city giving them city-owned property on Fifth Street. To do this, we have to make sure that there is a public purpose, because that's the guiding principle for expenditures of money or property. Will the city get fair market value for its property, and are there any restrictions in our charter policies or ordinances that speak to conveying city property? So, in terms of the public purpose, first, the city will obtain a buildable lot on Pine Street, an established residential district that could use additional homes. Second, the city's vacant property on Fifth Street is not buildable, and the city does not have a use for the property. Third, if the Community Building Development Team acquired the city property on Fifth, it would offer access from Fifth Street to the Community Building Development Team's proposed projects on other projects owned by the Community Building Development Team or proposed on the Houston City property. Finally, if the Community Building Development Team takes ownership of the city's Fifth Street property, it could be used for the milk country trail. So, it's patently obvious that there is a public purpose, if the city wishes to make that trade of property. In terms of a fair market value, the legislature says that the true cash value of the Pine Street property is $8,663, and the city's true cash, or the property owned by the city on Fifth Street, that true cash value is $7,000. They're getting a more valuable piece of property than we could bring it up. And finally, I checked the charter, the purchasing policy, the city's evidence, and they're really silent on this subject, but there are sections of the charter and of our purchasing policy, that if you read, the intent is, we're reading the intent, and if you look at the charter, section 2.7, purchasing agent states in part, that in all sales or purchases in excess of $500, the sale or purchase shall be approved by the council. Formal sealed bids shall be obtained unless the council by formal unanimous resolution of those present at the meeting determines that no advantage for the city would result in a competitive bid. In this case, we've got two willing parties, the city would actually be getting a property of greater value, so I don't know that there would be any advantage to the city to go off the competitive deal. Our purchasing policy, section 3, general provisions, subsection B, sales of surplus city property states, the purchasing agent is authorized to sell supplies or equipment which has become unsuitable for city use by reason of obsolescence or other reasons, or may exchange the same floor or trade in the same on new supplies or equipment. Surplus supplies or equipment shall be sold on a competitive basis for highest bidder at the estimated value of $500, and a mandate described by council of less than $500. The city has, in previous meetings, has declared that this street is surplus property, have no use for it, it's not suitable for the city to hold on to, so it needs the unsuitable for city use provision. And also, it states in here that the city can trade in the same on used supplies or equipment, so if you look at it, a very literal interpretation, I believe, were followed in the intent of our purchasing policy.
Thank you.
So, basically, my recommendation is that the city trade properties for Community Building Development Team to propose.
Any discussion or questions? Any discussion or questions?
Just thank you, Beth, for taking care of that and giving us all the details, and I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
And thank you to the community building development team for putting in all the their participants about its years, because they're all wonderful things for our community. Let's move forward.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none under the roll call vote. Mrs. Conlin?
Yes.
Mr. Truesdale?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Roll call votes yes. Motion carries. Thank you. On the next is item C, motion to consider a request for the Cedar Springs Community Building Development Team regarding a use agreement for the proposed amphitheater to be constructed along Cedar Creek on city-owned properties.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion as presented.
Second. Discussion. Mr. Manager, would you speak to this?
First of all, I'm gonna be speaking collectively to items C, D, and E. The comments are, might be the same. So I met with representatives of the community building development team to discuss their interest in constructing amphitheater, rain garden, and wetlands, and a boardwalk along Cedar Creek. Each of the proposed projects would be sited on city property, the boundaries of which are Main Street, Maple Street, White Pine Trail, and Cedar Creek. The community building development team views the amphitheater as their primary project, the rain gardens and wetlands as the next project, and finally, the boardwalk along Cedar Creek. At this time, the community building development team would like tentative approval from the city that would allow their organization to construct the projects on city property subject to the city's normal and customary processes. Examples of the normal and customary processes are agreements allowing access to city property to perform preconstruction due diligence, site hindary, inspection by the city or its agents, payment of necessary fees, special land use requests, those types of things. Anything that we require of an organization in this building would be going, constructing some facility in the city. I feel the request is appropriate and necessary for the community building development team to take the next step in making their vision become reality. Accordingly, I would recommend council act positively on these requests. Another matter that was discussed at the meeting was the possibility of the city taking ownership of the projects when completed. At this point, there is not enough information available for me to make a recommendation to council regarding ownership. In the coming months, I will work with the community building development team to determine the cost of ownership, but I just want council to be aware that this is a topic of discussion that will probably be brought to council at some point in the future.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion on item D or C, excuse me, Mrs. Use for the amphitheater?
Just again, I'm very excited, Mr. Mayor, that the community building development team is doing obviously one of the things for our community. I'm just so excited for obvious wonderful things that are happening in Cedar Springs, and I think thank you to them.
Thank you. Mrs. Powell?
Beth, I just want to ask you, how did LP handle this? They had a beautiful amphitheater.
That was done well before I provided on the scene there. Those on city property, the city built their amphitheater there. They built their own.
Oh. Okay. Any other?
They have some money, for at least that property.
And any other discussion?
I think it's a positive thing all the way around. There's so many different organizations in this community that can use that one, two amphitheaters somewhere to use in their own park.
Absolutely. I think all three of these next ones are the same. Any further discussion before I call for a vote? Yeah, the roll call vote? Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Truesdale?
Yes.
Mrs. Conlin?
Very much, yes.
Mr. Hall, yes. Motion carries. Item D, motion to consider a request by the Cedar Springs Community Development Team regarding a use agreement for rain garden structure and wetlands delaying ancient on city-owned properties.
Mr. Mayor, I will make the motion as presented.
No, second that. Okay, any discussions?
Appears have they delineated those areas more carefully? I know we had the flags out there last fall, and I kinda walked around there, and I thought that looks a little bit bigger than what I had in my head that it was going to cover. But I, just not clear on how big of an area we're talking for the rain garden.
Rain gardens is different than the wetland. Wetlands, basically, that's where everything's going to after it's through the rain gardens. Rain gardens are pre-filled, and a little bit more pretty out, flowers and stuff.
Is it gonna look similar to what it does over by CSN factory?
It's gonna be similar, but different, because the rain gardens are smaller patches, like there's like six of them.
Does this include the areas out by the pond? Wasn't there going to be some?
Oh, you mean the water lane?
Yes.
Water restoration is different than the rain gardens. It's in the same thing here, but they're technically different things.
So what's going up by the pond?
Oh, you know the one, no, no.
That's a, that's a completely different thing. So this is why?
I think the delineation was very together, though.
Was it?
I think the delineation was just made, if you could break me on that, that certain thing?
Yeah, we have delineation done, four pieces of property, and what was done, North Park was one, the property along the fault, across on Cox's property, and also property up. So we had the delineation done, because people wanted to do it. The North Park is not part of us, but however, they are looking at grants and doing different ones also. North Park is not part of what we're proposing now. And the city has budgeted, I believe it's $3,000 towards rent match for the North Park property.
You know, be mindful, this is the property behind the park. This is the delineated property.
Where the, where the IT is?
The pouring alley, not anywhere else.
It's just behind the park. So how close does the water gardens, how close do they come up to the well?
They're actually a couple over there, moving to be on the west side, and a couple over there, moving up the east side. There's only a little bit of space out in there. But go to the end, and then, pre-built and reworked, and then where it sits before it was going to be.
Where the water comes off the parking lot?
Still have any pictures?
She, the bank, I think you weren't here.
Yeah, you weren't here. That was evident.
It was a beautiful side, though.
You're in high law, working. Any further discussion? This is the property behind the fire line. Okay. Hearing none. That's the roll call vote. Mrs. Conlin?
Yes.
Mr. Truesdale?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Roll call votes yes. Motion carries. For the rain garden. Moving on to item D, motion to consider a request from Cedar Springs Community Development Team regarding a use agreement for a proposed boardwalk on city-owned property. Mr. Hopkins, can you speak to that? Seems already here.
Yeah, I can, basically, the initial search is if you have the Main Street over to White Pine Trail. Part of it will be, it's proposed, it's material, it's gonna be fully set out, but part of it is going to be, or, or added, where it'll be, parsoled material, it's gonna be timber for support. And it'll be like, my understanding, we're gonna have like, a little bit where it goes over, part of the water lane where it gets right by the creek, and we either, or house or age for once.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Moving ahead, we need a motion, I'm up.
Powell makes a motion to consider a request on the Cedar Springs Community Building Development Team regarding a use agreement for a proposed boardwalk on city-owned property.
Second?
Second.
Second?
Okay, discussion?
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Sure.
I guess, I was just confused, I thought this was the DDA.
Well, the EDA is for, and what's community development?
Oh, that was on the, I just thought it was the EDA. It's not that it matters.
Yeah. Mr. Hopkins has been working on that with the community development team. Areas where Blacktop is suitable is the, in there, the water, of areas over the, the water, wetlands will be of a timber structure of a deck type over for walking.
Powell, any bids on?
We've got one in the works, but we're gonna do the three bid system, because it is gonna be over $500, yes.
And right now, they're, they're in the preliminary, trying to figure out money, where the cost, whether it'll be, and how much, let's say, the bid process, I sat in on one of their meetings. It's basically, hopefully, we can apply for some grants possibly. However, it all works together to build this tie-in from our Main Street sidewalk over to the White Pine. Any other discussion on this? Hearing none, I'll call for a roll call vote. Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Truesdale?
Yes.
Mr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Conlin?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Hall votes yes. Motion carries. Item F, motion to approve a contract with Hometown Decorations, yeah, Decorations and Display LLC for the winter holiday decorations. That will be our Christmas lights. Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the contract with Hometown Decoration for the holiday decorations. Hold. Mr. Mayor, would you speak to this, or?
The city's been using this company for a number of years to supply our Christmas decorations. We're proposing a three-year contract for 2015, 16, and 17, and I would recommend that the council approve the contract.
Any other discussion on Christmas decorations on Main Street?
The point, remember, you said at the last meeting, we thought that they pretty much only wanted to deal with that?
In this area, yeah. They've been around for a long time, and just not a lot of companies in this area do this, like work.
Do they do work for other municipalities?
Yes.
Yeah.
Many.
My, I think I'm, they're speaking to me. The question I asked was, why did we not send this out for bidding, get three bids? Why were there not three companies? And Linda was, because there aren't.
Monopoly.
So.
That's a cool word. Any other discussion? Roll call vote? Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Nixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Truesdale?
Yes.
Mrs. Conlin?
Yes.
Roll call votes yes. Motion carries. Item G, motion to approve resolutions 2015-13, a resolution approving a new Freedom of Information Policy for the City of Cedar Springs.
The state enacted a new law dealing with FOIA that, that takes effect July 1st, that is going to significantly change the way we address FOIA complaints or requests, how we notify when we're charged, where we have to make the information available. So our city attorney drafted a policy for us with all the advancements that were unnecessary by law to the debt for a number of community representatives. So we've gone through it, it works, it's gonna meet all the requirements, and we'll be in compliance by first if council approves it tonight.
Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion to adopt the Voting Freedom of Information Act procedures and guidelines as established pursuant to resolution number 2015-13.
Second. Mr. Clark, second. Any other discussion?
Things were the same, so we didn't have much choice, right?
Correct.
This was without shout.
Yeah. Any other discussion?
Well, I just think that it's, it was an excellent opportunity that manager came across to find this, the documentation and everything, so he didn't like to reach out and, or had Linda do it all herself.
Although, although I'm quite certain that at this point, Linda is probably an expert at FOIA.
Not on the rule. It's all new.
How many FOIA request dreams do you have?
Pardon?
How many FOIA request dreams do you have?
Nightmares. More like nightmares.
Actually, it's what, I don't even give them. Okay. Hearing none, the roll call vote. Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs., Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Good.
Mrs. Nixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Truesdale?
Yes.
Mrs. Conlin?
Yes.
Mayor votes yes. Item G, motion to approve resolution 20, drafting a resolution approving, no, excuse me, motion to, item H, on, on, motion to consider a proposed agreement with the City of Cedar Springs and the Red Flannel Festival.
I move to consider this agreement between the City of Cedar Springs and the Red Flannel Festival. Second.
Okay.
The city attorney reviewed the second draft agreement, which was a little hard, and he did provide counsel with his comments and his concern, some procedural, several legal in terms of legal violations. So it would be my recommendation that the council's committee, again with Red Flannel, try to iron out some of those concerns.
And any of those concerns something that you could share publicly, or if you would not be?
Well, it was a provision confidential communication directed to the council through me, so I can't violate that confidential and privileged information status.
I remember, did I see something in there where we would have had to vote?
The council could electively vote to give up that privileged and confidential information, but it'd have to be a vote of the council. I can't do it.
Any discussion? I, we're gonna have motion first. It's being moved and seconded, moved by Mrs. Nixon and seconded by Mrs. Powell.
And I'm still trying to get down to it, I'm getting cast by FOIA stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Mayor, any comment? I know after that, when they first put in the committee for that, the question was asked whether the public was able to be in that, and at that time, it was under the impression that it was only council members and Red Flannel Festival members. Then after that OMA training session, we learned that that was not necessarily true.
Uh-huh.
So I actually recommend that we give the public a little bit of time to actually recognize, because I did have a few, so this was, that was the reason why I brought it up, is because they asked to be a part of that. But then, when I went back to my, like, the system, council members, you know, Red Flannel Festival.
No, there was a second meeting held.
And it was posted.
And it was posted.
And it was public.
Yeah, but how much notice did the public get?
It was stated about.
More than was required.
And it was put in the paper.
Another time? $25 is probably required for, for.
That was all the public knows.
Eighteen hours minimum notice, okay?
Is what, is required? Is what, is required minimum notice? I don't know exactly how much, how much.
Dan brought it in about 10:00 in the morning, and I posted it immediately on the web search, that's when we noticed that the city gave, didn't put it in the article in the paper, that would be how the people knew.
Right.
And the public there?
Pardon?
The public there, at the meeting, and I submitted the minute.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I don't know, I think, I think you mentioned that the attorney suggested, I think, to should be addressed before it's proceeded.
I would like to make a motion.
With one motion on the floor. Okay.
Regarding the.
You're modifying your initial motion.
Yes, I would like to modify my initial motion to, I don't know, I got to. To consider both the proposal agreement between the City of Cedar Springs and the Red Flannel Festival, to also include to discuss the email publicly from the attorney regarding the contract.
Second. Wait, that would be the, Mrs. Powell supported that?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm surprised.
So you have to say, support the second.
Can we do that, Mrs. Clark?
Yes, if the council votes to waive that privilege, they can do that.
Okay.
Because this is that I can't do it for the council, or one individual council member can't do it for the council, it's got to be a jury vote, council.
I just want to make everything clear.
Is a point of order?
Point, yes, I was going to bring one, but go ahead.
I feel like we would need a separate vote on the email than the, considering the Red Flannel contract.
You're absolutely right, and that was my comment, was that we cannot tie them two together. If we do, we automatically renew the agreement with the festival regardless of the, so.
So we need to make a motion to table, the first motion until the completion of?
Uh huh.
No? You have to add on the motion that was just made.
Correct.
You can't rescind it, or? You can withdraw. I would actually withdraw my amended motion.
Let's get the noise cleared. Ma'am Kirk, are we allowed to withdraw that?
I think that you need to withdraw your first motion, you just simply have to act on the motion that Molly just made, and then when you're clear with that, then you go back and vote on your.
Correct, I want to make sure there's two motions.
Right.
Okay. Hearing that, we will act on the second motion that Nixon made, and that will do clear the client, attorney-client privilege of the city for the sake of item G. Any discussion? Okay, I'm going to call for the vote on Mrs. Nixon's motion to waive the client attorney privilege. Everybody understand that? Just want to make sure, a yes vote means that. Yes, a yes vote means that we will waive the client attorney privilege. If you vote no, then you will, your vote is no. Everybody's understand?
Regarding the, the content from the lawyer.
Correct. So what that'll do, it'll allow the manager to read aloud or whatever comments that our city attorney has given. Everybody's clear on that? Okay.
That's what we're going to do. Support that motion. It's by support, you support it.
No, any more motions, just third case. Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Nixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Truesdale?
Yes.
Mrs. Conlin?
Yes.
Mr. All votes yes. Okay. We have a motion on the floor to consider the proposed agreement between the City of Cedar Springs and the Red Flannel Festival. Mr. Manager, could you speak to that?
You wish I could read the email from the city attorney's address to me. An opportunity to take a look at the revised Cedar Springs, Red Flannel Festival agreement, which was sent over earlier this afternoon, and had not reviewed in any detail the accompanying trademark agreement, although I did note there are some changes which were made, frankly, they seem inconsequential to the city. As to the revised festival agreement, several of the changes made are not, in my opinion, inconsequential to the city, and in fact, are less favorable than was the first version sent, which was the subject of a letter dated June 3, 7. Some comments and observations with respect to the agreement. I think it's worth noting that none of the issues raised in the earlier opinion letter appear to have been addressed in the revised agreement. By way of example, there is still no cost containment mechanism that will allow the city to renegotiate its commitment if the city's financial circumstances require it to do so. Similarly, the process by which the Red Flannel Festival would obtain approval for the festival still appeared to envision not requiring the Red Flannel Festival to comply with the city's ordinances and anticipates waiving lawfully adopted and currently effective fee structures, et cetera. As I noted in my earlier letter, if the city wants the ability to waive fees or the way that application of ordinances, it needs to amend the same, as the city cannot amend laws by contract, instead, the legislative process must be followed. Moreover, as noted earlier, it is important that the parties recognize that one legislative body cannot, under Michigan law, bind the hands of a subsequent legislative body in terms of the ability to adopt ordinances and resolutions. A successor governing body will have the right to change the law as it seeks it, and this cannot be contracted away. Finally, the concern I raised previously with respect for the determination provision, which formerly required unanimous consent, was lawful, has not changed substantively, and leaves open the question as to whether this is enforceable. The revised version creates arguably some new problems for the city. First, section 2A1 changes the date to submit the application to the May 1, assuming the parties intend to use this format for 2015, that deadline cannot be met. Second, section 2B changes the references from the city paying their certain services to donating the same. It is unclear how this is advantageous to the city, since as you know, a municipality cannot donate money or other things of value to private entity without legal authorization. Better, in my opinion, to keep it the way it was, to make it clear that the city is paying for services to be received. Third, section 2B3 obstructs the requirement formerly imposed on Red Flannel Festival to provide the city with an estimate of city's costs for the festival. It appears now that section 2B taken as a whole is intended to impose on the city all costs of any kind associated with the provision of public services, regardless of the amount or extent of those costs. No provision is made for DPW costs outside of normal working hours. Section 4A instructs the duty of the Red Flannel Festival to name as an additional insurance the city's officers and employees in addition to the city property. I strongly recommend against this change. The fact is that individual officers and employees are sometimes named in lawsuits brought by third parties, and this change would appear to mean that those officers or employees named in such a lawsuit would not be entitled to coverage. More practically, what difference does requiring coverage for the officers and employees of the city make to the Red Flannel Festival? Section 5 changes the former requirement relative to determination from unanimous consent as noted above. It now appears to provide that the agreement could be terminated only if the three-quarter majority of both the city council and Red Flannel Board consent to the termination. In other words, and even if this is not the intent, the agreement can reasonably construed to mean that three-quarters of the combined votes of both bodies is necessary to terminate the agreement. If this is in fact the intent, I do not think it is lawful as it would appear to delegate to non-elected individuals the right to make decisions for the city. That is, even if the entire city council voted to terminate, as written, this would appear to allow the Red Flannel Festival Board to pass such action and lock the city.